Let me know.
Okay.
If we're not, I know. I will.
Well, not if we're not, if we're canceling. Yes, that's what she just said.
At this point, how? We're gonna do Buffalo chili, just saying. We could. Real buffalo.
Real dead buffalo. Good to go? Well, excellent. Thank you all for being here today. Good to see you all. We're first going to get started with August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. We're gonna start it with a work session discussing the League of Urban Cities legislative priorities. Forgot about that. I guess if we'll first get started with a roll call.
What's it called, Roddick?
Here.
Kazi?
Yeah.
Matt Lehman?
Yeah.
Christopher McCormick?
Here.
Mason Nielsen?
Presente.
Ash Jones?
Also here.
Now you're presented.
I am also present.
But yeah, we're gonna start off with a discussion of the LC legislative priorities. Sorry, I sent my own lead.
So the league puts this out every other year, as you recall, actively just before the long session. Now, but there was a shorter version prior to, but this is kind of the big one. Make their direction from the cities to know what the priorities in the cities are. They've got pretty well-established teams, lobbyists that are assigned to different areas, and each of them have people they're focused on. They've got their ear to the ground on things that the legislature is probably already thinking about, looking about, things they've looked at in previous years, or where they feel like there's some movement that they can gain some traction this upcoming legislative session. So that's what they put out to all of the cities, and they just look for feedback to see from the league members, the city members that make up the league, how close they are. So it's kind of a pulse check more than anything to see if there's, you know, if they're hitting some of the right nerves, if there are things that they feel are priorities or how that nobody else in the state feels like are priorities. Um, so again, this is kind of a look in the mirror for them to see how they're doing before they go into the session. I sent this out to everybody ahead of time. I also sent it out to the management team. And so what you see on just the one page you're here for priorities is, uh, I didn't really track, uh, if you put something as your first priority versus third priority, because some people ranked them differently. Um, some are ranked per individual category, some are ranked total, and some are just, here's my top six or seven. So rather try to make heads or tails of that. If it got a vote from somebody who submitted, I tallied it as one. And so what you're seeing on the ranked sheet is anybody who put a tally first through seven or first through ten or first through five priorities, it got one marking. So that's where you're seeing a ranked. So this is what we came up with. Um, I've got the email already from the League of Urban Cities to report our responses. This is not an exact science. We wanna get close. We just wanna make sure that we're in the ballpark. Mostly wanna hear if there's specific, um, reasons why some of the things, maybe they're down towards the bottom. If you feel strongly that those should be included in the city's top priorities, we'll be having that discussion. Um, I don't move the boom by ya too much around the top five or six. Um, unless again, you feel pretty strongly that one of those isn't very important, or we shouldn't be putting any focus on them. So with that, I think the two part for the work session today. One, make the case for anything below that top five or six that you feel the city should be recommending as a top priority. Let's have the discussion amongst yourselves. And then after that, I'd like to have a discussion with the council about the council's role in the lobbying effort that we do, that the league does on our behalf. We can be much, much more involved. We can be as involved as we are now. We can be less involved. Um, and I can kind of explain when we get kind of past this area and what we like and don't like for this year, and that we can kind of shift the discussion, um, time permitting, on what we're currently doing. Things that other cities do to be more involved than what we are now, and what a step kind of backwards from what we're doing today could look like as well. So, um, if we could save a little bit of time for that discussion, that'd be great, too. So all that said, focusing on this year and what we're looking at. Does anyone wanna come right out of the gate with anything in that lower, kind of lower half that they were surprised is as low as it is and wanna mix a case to see if we can bump it up a little higher?
Uh, prior to that, I just wanted some clarification about the infrastructure funding. From what I understood, aren't they the same? And there's two on here.
They are.
Yeah, just to, like, for your awareness.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, the one that, uh, stuck out to me was the shift from gas tax to the road user fee. Um, I was surprised that was lower down the list. Um, the transportation package is gonna be a huge part of the upcoming session. And they're gonna be discussing not only, probably not very much projects and things like that, but really focusing on how to pay for the stuff that we currently have. And part of that discussion involves the, um, the continued assertion by the legislature that the gas tax is not going to provide enough revenue to do those things, regardless of the fact that it, income from it has continued to go up over the last several years, despite all the naysaying. But anyway, I do agree that going to a road user fee is significantly more fair than using a, um, straight gas tax to fund, um, transportation needs. And I was just surprised that it didn't seem like that big of a deal to everybody else.
How's it, Kazi?
I must be the other vote, because I think I chose this one, too. Um, but I'm wondering, do you have, um, any information on how that road user fee would be assessed? Is it just a flat fee or?
It's up in the air right now. Everything that I've heard has been from voluntary reporting, just based off your odometer. You can plug things into your port on your car, and they can track you. And you can sign up for something, they haven't really defined it yet, but there, there could be options in between that spectrum, basically. Um, and just as an aside, I haven't heard anyone say, they say shift from ga- gas tax to, to a road user fee, but I think what that means is adding the road user fee to the gas tax. So, um, but I don't think anything's been written in, in even pencil yet on what the options are. But I think everyone understands that we're gonna have to do that.
I, I was gonna say a very similar thing, just that I was intrigued by how high up just the general twenty twenty-five transportation package is. Because as far as I'm concerned, like, that's not something we need to advocate for. Like, there will be a twenty twenty-five transportation package. We need to decide what we want to be in it. So I guess that, I was hoping we could talk more about things like that, or about the, like, public and inter-community transit, or about sort of what do we want that package to be? Because that's kind of like saying we wanna advocate for there to be school funding. Like, they're gonna pass school funding. It's just a matter of, like, how much and in what way? And that's kind of, I think, where the, the probably be. So I don't think it's worth putting a ton of time and effort into urging them to pass something we know they're gonna pass. It should be more about, like, what do we want included in it?
I think, um, I think my perspective is that on something like that, if the league would say, hey, that's a priority, and then figure out, well, how does, how might the cities actually? What input might they provide?
Right.
But they're not asking us for too much input. They're asking us for our ranking, right? At this point?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, everything on the list, they're going to advocate for in one way or another.
Right.
And, and again, I think what they're looking at is time is short, resources are limited. And again, just doing the pulse check to make sure that things they're advocating as strong as for, that they're reflective of what we, as the members, are telling them. So anything listed on there, you know, unless they heard overwhelmingly like, no, we absolutely don't want you to talk about this even. Um, which again, these, these are, are full-time advocates, right? Like, this is what they do, the lobbyists, they have a pretty good feel for what the cities have been asking for. They've, they're talking individual cities, they're talking collectively to cities. So that there, for me, like, there aren't any real, like, surprises or shocking here with the things that aren't real high on their priority list, like the place-based planning, like, that already passed previous session. This is like refunding or continuing to fund that program. So I think a lot of people are like, eh, again, that's gonna kind of happen, and it's good for the small number of communities that are involved in that exercise. And I hope they continue to get funded, but I don't wanna spend a lot of time lobbying for it, right? Like, I think, so I, um, ag- again, I don't wanna get too much in the woods of what's our number one, what's our number two, what's our number three. I do wanna make sure, again, if there's things towards the bottom that we feel are a pretty high priority, that we can, you know, advocate for those as well. But essentially, anything that's on this list is gonna get advocated for one way or another. Other exercises that might be helpful not to convolute things too much, but if there's FALOMH specific examples of any of these things that you're aware of, that you wanna make sure that we let the lobbyists know, that's helpful to know as well. Um, we typically get letters or emails from the lobbyists, pre-session, during session, says, you know, hey, there's a, we're seeking testimony on this topic, and we need it by tomorrow at five. And, you know, they're lucky if they can get three or five or ten city managers or staffers to write up a quick scenario of how it would impact FALOMH, how it would benefit FALOMH, or a story or scenario that's happened in FALOMH that would be affected by that. And I'll try to send those emails and send it off, um, to, to try to help, and then they have some examples. So if we know those ahead of time, like now, it's a lot better than, like, hey, we need this tomorrow at five or today at five. Um, so as you're thinking through and looking at these, if there's FALOMH specific examples that you wanna point to, I can make note of those now and keep them in mind.
So in regards to community safety and neighborhood livability, I'm trying to understand what you're asking for. Are you asking for things like the Sixteenth Street connection when we, in that street? Where, what do you, you know, when we, and that roundabout by the, by the, well, is that what you're talking about? Are you talking about something much more specific or different?
No, I think that one's a good example. I mean, um...
In regards to state fund, I'm, that's what I'm trying to grasp. What are you looking for in regards to examples?
Yes, I mean, we use some of the money we get from ODOT that comes to our region to pay for the sidewalks. So to me, that's like a great example of making sure we're continuing to allocate funds to CAMPo so that we have money for transportation, which goes into kind of the infrastructure funding piece that we said, that's a given, there's gonna be a package. I can guarantee you that we will be strongly advocating, having many, many discussions with the legislators about what should be in that package, and how that money shouldn't just go to ODOT, and shouldn't just go to the state departments, that it needs to be funneled through to the county and the cities so that we can get that infra- that money for infrastructure, and we can get it where it needs to be, that it's coming through, and not just loans, right? We, I can go out and get a loan tomorrow. We need grants, we need, you know, the technical assistance, we need some of that other stuff as well. So, yeah, it's a given, we'll have it, but we're still gonna be actively, we, the league is still gonna be actively advocating for what goes into those bills, and how much of that funding comes directly to the cities, to the COGS, or, you know, however it comes. But if it doesn't get just stuck in all the state agencies, and they make all the decisions where it gets funded.
And then just a quick clarification, we're looking to identify three to five priorities? Or how's that?
Yeah, I should have got the memo. I think it's, I think it's five that we submit.
Yeah, yeah. Councilor?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that, yes, they are definitely, like, at the water, um, committee, policy committee, they had specifically told us, don't get caught up on what it is that you, like, don't get caught up on the particulars. It's very much just, uh, um, where do we allocate our time? Um, and on that note, I did not submit any of my preferences, uh, for priorities. And so I do agree that the, um, shift to the road user fee is important. Um, and I guess I had questions about what exactly some of these are that we're talking about. Because, so like, with the place-based planning, in the, in the committee, we talked about how it was continued funding with the idea of, like, expanding that and to make place-based planning, like, a way to, um, like, trying to, to advocate for that as opposed to these broad, um, rules applied throughout the state. Um, and so I guess I would like some clarification about whether some of these are, you know, these few blanket, um, funding pools versus, like, you know, the, the, the idea that, that they are going to invest in these things, and that will benefit us, if not in the short term, at least in the long term.
We have about each of these things. Unless we have it and, unless we know it ourselves, it didn't provide more control.
Well, there was kind of a detail in the, in the report.
Oh, in the league? Yeah. Place-based planning is responsible to water, and so you're looking at watersheds, and how watersheds can pull together new regional planning for water resources. So it's, they, they should have added in there something about water, but if the place-based planning is about water.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm aware of that. I, I guess what I need to say is, um, not necessarily for my sake. I guess I, I just wanted us to consider that idea that, you know, it's not just these four cities that are going to be getting funding for that, because I think it's important for place-based planning. It's, it's not necessarily that they're going to get their projects funded. It's, yeah, they're, like, those, whoever's involved in those projects are going to get funding, but also it's with the idea of that this is going to be a larger thing that, you know, other watersheds are going to, um, you know, do their own projects and, you know, have more information to build better plans.
Councilor Lehman, you have your hand up.
I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, so I'll just ask.
More?
Um, I guess I was just thinking about it in terms of if we're submitting, like, five things. The top five right now are the, if you never had the livability, lodging tax, recreational immunity, and then either the cybersecurity or the energy affordability. And I guess I was just curious, like, in my brain, a lot of other things that I would like, but are there any of those that I'd be willing to get rid of for one of those? So I guess I'm just curious from other counselors, like, I agree, you know, maybe we should talk about the gas tax and road user fee, but like, which of those should we boot? To do that one, or, you know, place-based planning, et cetera, et cetera? And it's a genuine question. I guess I, I couldn't decide on my own, so, yeah.
Anybody have a response to that? I know Counselor Cocker had a part.
After, after Diane, can I go?
No. Yeah, I've got something different.
Well, I would just comment that I think some of these are quite narrow.
Sure.
And some are very broad.
Yeah.
So, for example, lodging tax flexibility, okay, we'd like it to be, we'd like to be able to use more of it for different things. It's already cut and dried.
Yeah.
Unity, safety, and neighborhood livability is incredibly broad.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess the conclusion I would draw is if I could swap one out, it would probably be a narrow one. It was pretty straightforward.
Can I ask a question about the restoration of recreational immunity? A little more clarification on that one. I'm not remembering about that.
Do you have the answer on this?
Well, I can go after you if you want, or...
I'll be short then, because without the big word, I'll fill in the blanks.
I just, I got visited by the LOC lobbyists on this last session. I got both sides of it.
So recreational immunity is enjoyed by cities and counties and has been for years for our open spaces, our parks, our trails, um, whatnot. If we're not charging a fee for them to be used, then if somebody gets hurt when using them, cities and counties have had immunity from lawsuits that we're not liable or responsible. As long as we can't show that there's some type of negligence, right? Like, if we dig a hole and we don't cover it up, we're negligent and liable. But as long as it's a park, it's a trail, we do our annual inspection, somebody falls off the swing, breaks their arm. If we just inspected the swing last week and there's nothing wrong with it, we're not gonna be liable for a broken arm, that somebody fell off a swing and broke their arm, right? So that's recreational immunity. We're immune from injuries, accidents, happen just in the terms of recreating on public spaces. This was challenged by a lawsuit, um, first part of last year, or got set on last year, where an individual, I believe, was walking back from the beach, was on a trail and got hurt, and claimed that they weren't recreating on that trail system, that they were leaving from recreation and on a trail headed to their vehicle or home or whatever. But the use of that trail system wasn't recreating. It was just commuting from one place to another, and so therefore, um, believe that the city was liable, um, for damages sustained. And that actually got, um, went through the court system. And it just was, there was concern that cities and, and counties, there was actually a, um, some notices went out from the league for the cities to either shut down their parks and/or trail systems, or to put signs up that says these tr- our parks and trails are intended for recreational use only, not to be seen as, like, transportation-type issues. So at the end, um, there was legislation that got passed, I believe, last session, and then mid-session, that gave, restored some of that recreational meaning, but didn't go far enough as far as the league's concerned. So I don't know the specifics here on what the language they're looking for, but it deals with that issue to try to make sure that we can re-establish some of those guarantees we've had on recreational immunity, so that those open public spaces are protected spaces for cities and counties. So otherwise, as you imagine, those liabilities go way up and, and recreational areas start getting closed down because the cities, counties don't wanna have that liability out there.
It is temporary, too. It expires January first.
That's, that's the only thing I was gonna say, yeah. Just like last session, they kind of came to a compromise with the trial lawyers and everything, like this sort of stopgap, where they just kind of added, like, inelegant language in it, of like, also, by the way, if you roll your ankle on a trail, that's recreational, ha ha. Um, as a sort of, like, compromise that they would just put that in there while they talked about it more to come up with, like, a longer-term solutions. I think now that's just kind of coming back to that and having a more, like, durable...
Maybe one of the things that I would say, you know, I think it's important, but it's gonna be dealt with probably regardless.
Hopefully, yeah. I think it's just, I, I guess the way I view it is just a matter of, like, how hard do we want the league to, to make sure that the trial lawyers don't, you know, erode it too much? But, yeah. And not to villainize the trial lawyers, but...
Let's do. They're the only reason why the...
Yes, that is true.
On this topic, I do find kind of strange that the, um, state and state agencies allocate funds to us, and certain portion of those funds have to be dedicated to trails and things like that. And so they're, like, forcing us to have trails, but then they're withdrawing the recreational immunity from it. And also, like, a big, huge, one of the big tent poles of the DOT is active transportation. And the promoting, incessant promoting of active transportation, and yet don't wanna give immunity to anybody who has the trails or the walking paths or anything like that, that have to be part of that network. And it just seems convoluted to me. So I, I agree that this should be high up on the list, um, that you can't, in one hand, force people to have trails and then also force them to carry the liability for if someone gets hurt while they're using the trail.
It is really kind of an existential threat to any group that operates.
Correct.
It makes me wonder if the bike path is, uh...
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Well, I just wanted to add that when Chris and I, I think, heard from the league march, they said that the language that they're really pushing for is for the areas, um, to be seen as cities intend them. So that's what they want to get in there, is so we say, this is a park for recreating, but that is what will hold, rather than that there's, um, other blanket language that is really open for interpretation, so that it kind of brings it back to the city's level. We'll say, this is a pathway for recreating. So if you're doing that, that's what you're doing, so.
I'm gonna go back to suggestions of, um, Ninth Street. We heard last time that it is, has no sidewalks, it's very dangerous, it's thin, uh, there are curves that are blind, so that could fit into the safety and neighborhood livability, and also infrastructure funding, because we need to do something about that, I believe. It'd be nice.
Are you talking with county, has it though, or?
Well, after tonight.
Yeah.
I made out on it.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
I just wanted to address your question. I would kick off the energy affordability challenges. I don't know, honestly, how much impact the legislature's gonna have on that, and I don't think we would like the solution that came out of it if they did decide to have an impact on it.
What makes you say that?
Because they're practically communists.
There it is.
We all know who they are. Lives in a big house in Salem.
About your son?
Well, it was my son.
I guess I was just gonna ask Chris, like, do, are they also interested in examples of, like, positive change? Because I feel like our Streetscapes project could work as an example of the community safety, neighborhood livability, just with the sort of, like, safe streets, main streets piece. Um, I think they could, that's definitely a, some, something to show off, maybe, if they're looking for that.
More of this?
Does that count, though? Because it's ODOT. Like, I think it's, it said specifically not ODOT.
Well, Streetscapes is a partnership.
Yeah, some of it is true.
I don't know. I'm just putting it out there. Yeah, just, you know, something to keep in mind.
No, I was just curious.
No, yeah, it's a good question. I don't, I don't know. And I, for Counselor Lehman, if, were you saying then replace the energy affordability one with the gas tax one? Or just, okay, okay.
That would be my...
Yeah, right.
...suggestion, yeah.
How do you feel about that? Do we have a specific suggestion?
I have a question related to that.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, for the infrastructure funding, is that, is that not going to be, like, done anyway?
I think it will be. It's a matter of how the funds get allocated. Who's gonna be in charge of further distribution, um, what strings get tied to it? Um, so there's, there's the legislative, what's legislative passes? And then there's the directives that come from the department, depending on which department it is and all the strings that get it tied, and the administrative rules that come with it. So what the league typically does is tries to streamline that as much as possible and get the funding, like, to the COG or to the cities directly, um, or to the counties directly, rather than going through all the state agencies to, not all the I's, across all the T's, just so the funds are more readily available for use. Um, so I think that's, my impression is that's what the league would push for, would be more local control of those funds, rather than state control of the funds.
It's, I, I would be more in favor of that one being removed, um, as opposed to the energy affordability changes, challenges.
Counselor?
Um, I have a question about, um, our low-income assistance in our city. Do we have a cap on how many people can apply for that as far as, you have something correct? That they can get?
Budget.
Don't we have low-income assistance?
Numbers stay pretty consistent for the...
But we don't have a cap as to how many people can apply for that or participate in that?
No, we give about the same amount of funding each year to, to partner organizations to help with that, and then we've got our own, that we kind of just build into the utility rates that we do. We know a certain percentage of those are gonna be locked into that lower rate. Um, but it, it's not a big impact. I mean, the numbers are so small compared to our terrible budget for those utilities. It's, it's not a big impact.
So the reason I ask is because I've worked with a lot of organizations that have food insecurity. And in talking with the individuals that are in that position, what they talk about is choices they make, whether to buy utilities or buy groceries. They know they need a house, a roof over their head, but the choice sometimes is utilities or groceries, which is why they seek out help with the organizations like PCS and others that help with that, uh, condition. So, um, I understand, uh, Counselor Lehman's concern. Um, but rising utility cost to me in the form in which I volunteer... Um but rising utility costs to me in the form in which I volunteer.
It's a concern.
Having to make choices like that, those um really shouldn't have to be made. You should be able to afford utilities and groceries for our families. So I'm a little hesitant on. I understand, maybe that won't be for the benefit of our city, but I just wanna assure that if we, if we move that from the top. Six or whatever, we have something in place in our city that's gonna meet the needs of our citizens as monies get tight. And they have to make choices like that from utilities to um groceries.
My concern about that is that how do they know that that's even out there? I mean, unless they talk to someone that knows, I have met some that don't have a clue that not an option. And so maybe we could put our effort towards um educating our community. Or it might be inundated, I don't know, I don't know, but it would be good to uh have something.
Uh I'll also note that there are plenty of people who don't meet those criteria. Who are still struggling desperately um due to whatever bureaucratic standards that keep them from being able to get the help that they actually need. So um I I do think it's important to leave that in there, um leave the. Addressing an energy affordability challenges from rising utility costs as a priority.
Matt, how do you feel about the infrastructure funding comment swapping it?
I'd be fine with that, I didn't have a good feeling in in the way it was handled last year, where basically it was a Christmas tree bill at the very end of the session. And it was luckily for us, it was run by our representative, so I think, you know. Not that necessarily Flometh specifically benefited, but I think our district did. But I also feel that is subject to a lot of whim and fancy, and I would prefer it to be a structured thing. Similar to the way the transportation funding is done. You know, like, there's a fifty, thirty, twenty break. Twenty percent goes to cities, thirty percent goes to counties, fifty percent goes to the state. And it, I would like something similar like that set up for the infrastructure funding. Side of things rather than just who was standing in the sunshine the day it was decided, kind of a thing.
How do others feel about swapping or about moving the gas tax up and swapping out for the infrastructure funding?
I think the infrastructure funding for the community as a whole is probably the number one. Cause it touches everyone regardless of your income level, and I think it should remain as a top priority. And I believe it was a top priority on today's LOC bulletin. It is for everyone in the entire state, so.
Um what about a consideration of shifting cybersecurity and privacy down and then shifting our. Gas tax road user feeling thing up in place, I don't know. I don't know, I I thought it was.
Get us close.
It does get us close, but wasn't there six? I think I gave six.
Well, I would ask first.
We're gonna, we need six, just saying we need six. I I just, that's just an option, cause I I do feel strongly, um well. Yes, I'm gonna go with it, um.
Just send in our top six and don't rank.
Yeah, I just like. Yeah, I could shift off that one, I could get rid of that one, I mean, lower it down, I'm comfortable with that.
Everybody?
So swap gas tax with cyber s- cybersecurity?
Are you comfortable with that?
I don't think Doug Adkins would like this.
Doug Adkins isn't on the city council? Okay, that's helpful, and that gives us that top six.
That's how many wants to manage pay for any of the others? I think that's a good discussion. Now I've kind of described. Taking a full technical advisory committee, so. Councilman Lehman's done a great job for us since coming on to the city council, I think he was a little. Reluctant to jump into the transportation stuff, there's a boy there that nobody else was familiar. And then he jumped in, I think he's done a commendable job of learning it. And and really getting a good grasp of it and honestly taking some ownership of for our region, he's serving as the. The uh chair right now of the. Transportation Policy, the policy board. Um so you know, just a few years in, he's taken a leadership responsibility there of. At least getting everybody around the table to to talk within our region, which is great. Um so I do appreciate Councilman Lehman's efforts there from going from really not knowing a whole lot to. Running, helping around the meetings and coordinating with staff on their topics is is good. So I feel like we're we're well represented at the policy level, I feel like I do an adequate job representing us in the technical advisory committee. Been there a long time, it's funny to look around in the room and I'm like one of the oldest standing people on that committee now where I was the new guy. Showing up saying, give us money, give us money, and now it's, well, this is how we've traditionally done things and we. Share it around and everybody takes a little bit of a turn and sometimes we don't get all the money we'd like. The next year we asked for a little bit more and it ebbs and flows over time. So I think that's appropriate, but we have definitely been at the table more and we've gotten more funding. From that source for our transportation dollars, and I could give you a list of the, you know, half dozen, a dozen projects in Flometh that have. Come from that funding that we didn't used to get. Um so I I think we're represented there well on the the street transportation side. I also serve on the. Wetlands Consortium, which is also kind of hosted and housed within the cog. Um at least we use their staff to help fund this, and this is an effort that started. Dozen or so years ago to try to help get industrial, mostly industrial sites shovel ready. For businesses to come in and get started, specific to wetlands. And just like essentially getting sites pre-approved through the wetland process, the wetland permitting process. So that somebody new can come in and say, hey, we're ready to go, we wanna be open in a year, and we can say, your wetland permit's already been essentially approved. Based on these grounders. They made a lot of headway, it was kind of a last minute technical thing that the Army Corps came back and said, our rules, administrators don't allow us to. Pre-approve, we have to have the subject property, the subject application. So it was administrative rule thing that they weren't able, were willing to to change at the time. So we've worked for several years now on on trying to um streamline that process. We've built up better relationships with the Army Corps and with Department of State lands, we've taken time to educate our local communities on that process as well. Um educate property owners, we've um we're successful getting some legislate- money from the legislature. Six years ago to fund a study, well, four years ago to fund a study. Um on what it would look like for a a local government or government entity to own a wetland bank as opposed to just letting the private sector do that. Um several cities and counties have excess land that could be converted into wetland banks and. That would flood the market with more acreage, which would drop the price. Um but then you've gotta manage those funds, so we we have the study done, um we're looking for additional funding to do that next. Phase of that study, which is to look at the business model for such a wetland mitigation bank. And so that effort's kind of moving afoot, um I, we as a group have been very active with the most recent housing. Committee that the governor's put out on looking at. The obstacle that wetlands are for residential development, so we've given a lot of input there and talked about, again, how do we streamline processes? Delay payment and other things. So there's been some advocacy on behalf of Flometh and our region on the wetland side of things. On the transportation side of things with input. Um and other than that, we've responded to League of Oregon Cities surveys and then been pretty responsive to requests from lobbyists. As I described earlier on, specific topics of, you know, we need a story where this has happened, or we need a story where. You know, wetlands have impeded development within your cities, let us know. And so we've been responsive on those, but we haven't done much more than that. Um I'm not necessarily advocating for this, um some cities do have a separate committee that'll meet. Not year round, but selectively prior to going to sessions, priorities coming out. Um and they'll talk about priorities for them, they'll write a couple letters, we may reach out to private property owners, business owners. Get some letter support and advocate that way. Um others will meet regularly with their state representatives and senators. I think we've done an increasingly better job of that, Mayor Jones has done a great job, and any of you have done a good job of um. Building relationships there throughout the year rather than waiting to, you know, League of Orange Cities Day at the Capitol and we go and meet them for the first time. And ask them for a bunch of stuff, um our senator and our representative know who we are, they know many of us by name. And they know of many of our projects we're working on, the things that we're struggling with, the requests that we've made and ongoing expenses we have. That's a great spot to be, it's much better than I think we've ever been, uh that I've been aware of um right now today, so we're in a very good spot there. And we can continue those efforts. Some cities will hire their own lobbyists and they'll lobby for them at the Capitol. Um Benton County just hired a lobbyist and they're lobbying not only at the Capitol, but also federally for bigger projects and things. Um so that's again a consideration that some larger cities are doing, I know um. Newport has got a couple lobbyists that went all the way back to DC and were looking for federal funds for the dam that they need to. Build, I mean, it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars or tens of millions of dollars at least. So they're looking for local, state and federal funds for that project and they hired lobbyists just for that concerted effort. Um so again, on those types of big projects where federal dollars are necessary, that's an option too. Um but at this point, we're kind of doing this at the very local level. I think we're doing a great job of building those relationships with our representatives and senators that are gonna represent us. Um at the legislature and our interests. We've been pretty active with the league, I think we've done a great job of being more active at League of Orange Cities conferences. Uh the trainings, the the mid-year conferences. Uh getting those reports from the lobbyists, building those relationships, um telling our stories, so I think that's all been helpful. But there's more we can do, so I guess I'm asking you, is there more that you feel like we could or should be doing? I won't ask you to think if it makes a difference or not, um but but is there more that you would like us as a city to do? Recognizing that we have the same limitations as every other project, right? Limited staff, limited money, limited time, we've got a whole lot of priorities, things we would love to do that we don't have time to do even within our community. How much am I, I could spend hours every week just lobbying, right? I could literally spend hours and hours and hours. Doing this work, I don't think it's the best use of my time as a city manager, so that's what I'm asking is how much time, if anything more. Do you think staff should be doing, that you could be doing, that the city should be doing, or do you like where we're at? Do you feel like we're doing a good job?
I think I've been pleased with our efforts, I think especially for a city of our size, I think we do pretty well. I definitely wouldn't want us to spend a lot more time or money on this if the. For an example, where like if we had some specific project that was like Flometh. Hyper-local that, you know, required a ton of help, I think I could sign up for. Investment in that, but I I think we're doing great for the sort of general purpose. I think I'm also a fan of trying to continue to, you know, build up those relationships with legislators and everything. It does make a big difference to, you know, know them. Me from them, um but I think we're on the right path.
Yeah, I agree, I think we, I think I feel like we're, we've got a really good balance and. I feel like we are also maybe as a council and as city leadership, really. Learning or understanding the importance of those relationships and then prioritizing them a little bit.
Yeah.
In a way maybe that we haven't in the past, but um. So I think it's working great right now.
I have to, just kind of a general question, and perhaps it's a question for you, Christopher, but. I'm wondering if there would be an advantage in like meeting with. A lobbyist from LOC during a work session, so that all of us can have an opportunity to speak to. Him or her, or if you think it's more advantageous to work through the elected officials?
I think it depends on what we're trying to accomplish, cause a lot of the LOC lobbyists have their portfolios, so like. I think if we had some taxation issue that we were really passionate about, it would make sense to talk to LOC's like revenue lobbyists. Or if we had some broadband issue to make, talk to their infrastructure lobbyists, but. Um I think for just sort of general like city updates and what our city needs and what the state's doing. Um I think talking with the the elected officials makes sense, they also like, they love talking to their city people. Um you know, it it gives them a lot more cachet to be able to go into the Capitol and be like, you know, the. Three city councils in my district asked for this, rather than just like, I like this, you know, so it's a, it's a win-win. Like it can give them something to bring home and say like, you asked for this and here it is, as opposed to them just kind of like. Pulling at straws and trying to figure out what we want, so. And I I don't know if you know this too, but the LOC website has some pretty good resources if you wanna spend an afternoon. Um just with sort of like general, like how to lobby and how to work with staff and how to like interact with the Capitol and stuff, so. Um that might be worth us diving into a little more and that's all, maybe it's free to all of us, cause we're members of the league, so. Um yeah, I think it, the LOC lobbyists can be great resources, but usually if it's a little more like. If we have a question for them, right, yeah, rather than just like, tell us about the state, so, yeah.
If I could just add that real quick, um I think the league does a pretty good job making themselves available as well, like I said, at the conference, at the mid-year conference. Even the League of Urban Cities, the Small Cities events, at least once a year, they'll come out and. And hear from me, so I think they try to do a good job of keeping their ear to the ground and hearing from us. So I mean, sometimes we roll our eyes, it's got a legislative update, here we go again, that's, they're typically like, I'm gonna spend this much time and then I wanna hear from you. And I've never heard him say, oh, let me get back to your question later, I have, I wanna listen to myself talk, right, like, they're more than happy to stop talking and hear. From us on specific issues, specific concerns, and how they can feed that into what they're lobbying for. So I I I feel for the league, I think that they do a good job of listening and and hearing what we, what our concerns are.
Did anyone go to the most recent meeting?
It'll go to small cities?
Last Friday. I had a calendar.
I'm the next one and I'm like, oh.
I'm on my calendar and that's too much going on Friday.
That's okay, I'm just curious.
Next one.
I've got a question for Councilman Warren too, how much do you think testimony impacts the? Outcome of things, like, you know, we have opportunities to testify in front of committees and.
Yeah. Um, okay, not to continue to give the same answer over and over again, but I think it does depend. Like, I think if it's, if it's something that like twenty other people have already said the exact same thing you're gonna say. Sure, you can submit it, um written, I don't think it makes a huge difference to say it. I think if there's something that like our city specifically can add some insight to. It does make a difference, and I think it depends on what your audience is, like for Dick Anderson and David Gomburg. And maybe like Sarah Finger McDonald or Sarah Gelsor Bluen, what we say would make a difference, I don't think. Anyone else necessarily would care unless if it's like something that we can offer that would be applicable to other cities. Um but yeah, if it's something that there's already like a ton of testimony on, usually it doesn't make a big difference, but. Um but if it's something that there's not a lot on and we we have something insightful, people, I mean, the legislators do. Read through the stuff, I mean, or they skim it, um and.
Somebody in their mouth.
And and I mean, if you testify before the committee, like they, you know, they're there and they listen. Um I think it's just what gets tiring is when it's like, you know. Five people come up and say basically the same thing and they're like, okay, yeah, great, yeah, yeah, but um. I don't think it's like the, I, it's always more impactful if we can to meet with the legislators, um. But the testimony to that, I don't think it ever hurts. And then it is nice, cause it's on the record, then if you testify or if you just meet with them in their office. Um, and then it is nice because it's on the record, then if you testify or if you just meet with them in their office. As far as anyone knows, that never happened, so, yeah.
It's almost too much time. It's the fight in front of the committee, you're almost late in the game, right?
It's right.
That's the first time they're hearing about you and your issue.
Right, right.
You're late, right? It's like, okay, that's great input. I wish I'd have known that seven months ago when we were writing this legislation, you know? And so it is, I think, timing is important as well. I mean, if it's an issue. Our representatives should be hearing from us and that's what gets it out in front of the committees and and really. If it's on there and it's moving forward, it doesn't hurt to add testimony.
Yeah.
I think again, writing a note and it says, hey, we now we've heard from thirty cities on this, including six in my district.
Right.
Now they've got a voice to stand, so it doesn't hurt. Um, but as far as like helping or swaying or changing opinion. If you're not doing it until the committee is actually hearing testimony for the third or fourth day, I don't think it's gonna make a big difference.
I think the the biggest time I see it make a difference, like if your legislator is opposed to what you're saying. Giving testimony probably won't change their mind and if they're in favor, you don't need to give, you know. But usually it's where a legislator just doesn't really care about the issue. It's like, well, like, you know, just there's a million things going on. They can't focus on all of it. So it's just something that hasn't been on their radar. But then if they pull up OLS and see that like three cities in their district are in favor, then all of a sudden they'll be like, oh, right, now I'm in favor too. Um, so I think that's where I see it make the biggest difference. It's like, if your legislator just isn't really tuned into the conversation. Can get them to tune in a little more, but it won't change someone's mind who already. Indian about it usually, so, yeah.
Would it um, ever be appropriate to invite a legislator to a work session?
I think it's always appropriate to invite them to things. I think we would want to make sure we. Use their time wisely and had a good agenda to talk about with them, but yeah, yeah.
One of the things we've talked about at the. Um, city managers monthly meeting that we hold and the cog hosts it once a month. We've talked about how the cog could be more influential or be more participatory in. Priorities for our region, because the league priorities are for the entire state. So we've talked about, you know, would it be beneficial to prioritize these for just our region within our our cog, so within Lincoln and. Lynn and Benton Counties. Are there priorities within our three counties that are maybe a little bit different than what we're gonna see in the league, say, are there? Kind of top priorities that they're looking at? The answer for the most part is no. We tend to have very similar priorities with the rest of the state with a few exceptions to it. But one of the things that we have talked about is how we could help within our region to help build. Those relationships a little bit more by having maybe quarterly meetings or semi-annual meetings. Where we would invite our senators and representatives for our region to come together and feed them a breakfast. Or luncheon and talk about some of these issues, giving specific examples from our cities, you know, invite our elected officials. City, county and state level to come together and talk about our region and our efforts, even if it's. Some of the similarities here, but it's the story from, you know, the story from Harrisburg or the story from Flemish or what Albany's dealing with. Again, it's a, it would be a good opportunity to do. So we've, we've talked through that a little bit, um. You know, whether that be the League of Oregon Cities, you know, they do their Small Cities luncheons, maybe it's a. Many city sizes, just a regional luncheon that we do. You know, again, semi-annually, quarterly, whatever it would be to help. Give an opportunity to to do that, because again, before. Last four or five years, the first four or five years there, I mean, I knew our representative and senator, but we didn't have a relationship. I hadn't. You know, talked with them socially or anything else. It would have been a great opportunity to have that joint meeting, like, oh, here's your representative and have an excuse to sit at the table and. Have lunch together and talk through things. And I know a lot of smaller communities or just other communities generally, not even smaller. Other communities, if you don't have that relationship, it's kind of hard to break that ice and to have that opportunity and to give an excuse, so. I'm looking for the league, or looking for our cog to maybe sponsor that, either a breakfast or lunch or something. As an excuse to get all the elected officials together in a room to talk about these things, um, as well as the administrators. Um, but I've been talking about it for six months a year now. We just haven't gotten the right traction or the right date or kind of the right motive behind it, but. That is something I think we can do regionally that could maybe have an impact. Something additional that we're not doing now, that wouldn't necessarily have a direct expense for the city, um, that I reach, something like that.
I'll mention, it it's come up, like Ryan has brought it up at the cog meetings a couple times and. It doesn't always get a ton of interest from all, like, it gets a substantial amount of interest from a few. And not from everybody. I I was, I wonder how much, how far it's gonna go.
Yeah, well, I think that's why it hasn't happened yet, because not everybody has the same vision of. Sitting together having breakfast with your state representatives and senators, but. I think it would be positive, but not everybody does.
Sure, it would depend on the day too.
And what you're serving.
Start with that.
Yeah, so kind of similar vein, um, there's been a movement recently within the last six months or so in the. In Campo to merge with Ampo. And make it one bigger metropolitan planning organization.
I don't know if everybody's familiar with those acronyms.
Yeah, okay, so Campo is the Corvallis Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And currently to be a metropolitan planning organization. Recognized by the federal government, it encompasses at least fifty thousand people in one. Block and then it kind of stretches out from there wherever the people actually are. So like Adair Village and Flemish are. Included in the Corvallis in Campo. But for example, Monroe is not because it's like too far away to really be included as a part of the metropolitan area. And as Adair Village has been building out and North Albany's been building out and. Other parts of Albany like Tangent, things like that have been building out. The the separation between the two is getting closer and closer. And they're roughly the same size. I think Ampo's a little bit bigger than Campo, but.
Ampo being Albany?
Yeah, Ampo being Albany. Um, so when they were formed, they were, there was enough separation that they had to be two different things and Campo came first and then Ampo came. There's been a, an effort to blend them together to make one big like mid Willamette Valley. MPO or I don't even know what it would be called, but. Um, I didn't, I haven't brought it up because it didn't seem like maybe it was really gonna go anywhere, but now it kind of does. And kind of wanted to get a feeling from people how, how they would feel about that. If we get a say-so longer or not. And just some additional background, two or three years ago, the federal. It was before the pandemic. The federal government tried to raise the bar on the MPOs up to a hundred thousand. Which would mean that the Corvallis area would then just revert back to. Non-existent as far as the federal government is concerned. And that was fought and it was forestalled and I think mostly because of the pandemic. So I wouldn't be surprised at some point in the future if they want to circle back and. Raise that bar again, because as you can imagine, you could probably have the number of MPOs around the country if you just raised that bar. And, um, so anyway, there's some self-preservation involved in merging the two together also. But just wanted to see if I could get a general feeling.
And effectiveness, how do you feel about the effectiveness of it if it were to to merge? Would it, would we still? Would it increase? Would it decrease? Would we be able to accomplish what we hope to?
Yeah.
That larger body?
So like from a funding perspective, there would be a little bit less funding if you combined into one. But the overhead to run them would kind of counter, counterbalance that. So it seems like there'd basically be the same. Amount of funding available. You could have some conflicts because now instead of just competing with Corvallis, we'd also be competing with. You know, Tangent and Albany and Jefferson and those places for things. But on the flip side, like our transportation, our transit systems are linked right now. Like there's the Lynn Benton Loop and so. There's a lot of cooperation and coordination going on and that's what's been happening with Campo and Ampo. Currently, they're like trying to get to the point where our um, uniform. Whatever work thing, whatever UPMC, whatever that thing is called. They're doing it in conjunction with each other already. They're doing a lot of things together already. To try and streamline those processes. So I don't know that we would lose a lot of autonomy. But there's a potential for that for sure. On the flip side of that again is that having our transportation network. Linked more closely with Albany, since there are a lot of services in Albany that we don't have in the. Campo footprint, like shopping, just as an example.
Costco, I'm just sorry.
I'm just saying, the mall, Costco, any place that sells like juvenile boys clothing, just as an example. Jews, yeah, you have to go to Albany to get all that stuff, right? So if there was more synergy there and particularly on the transportation side, which I know is my thing, but. Um, it seems like there's some advantages that would come along with that, but there's some risks there too.
I guess I was just curious if there's data that you all have on how much. Commuting or whatever there actually is between the two. I'm not saying there isn't, but just. Like I, I agree they're sort of inching closer physically, but. I would just be curious to know, like, are they also inching closer economically and? Everything else, because I think that would be a more compelling reason to merge. It's like, oh, now they're a mile closer than they used to be, kind of thing.
So I think a good example of, to think about on that is there's a. A trail that's supposed to go along Highway twenty, like a bike.
Right.
Like pedestrian trail. And Albany has been pursuing it from the north and Corvallis has been pursuing it from the south. And at some point theoretically, I think three years from now, they're going to meet. But it seems like something like that should be managed. On a regional level rather than, than the two coming, coming together, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm sure there are statistics on how many people go back and forth, how many people live in Campo and work in.
Right, right.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't, I don't have those off.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure that those are available.
Um, I think there's strength in the numbers, so I can see the reason to combine them because. It'd be a much stronger entity, much louder probably also. I'm also worried a little bit that Flemish, while by the wayside as in in importance. Compared to all of that. So those are my two points of view, yeah.
I think it also worth noting that there are some cultural differences between the two.
Oh, big time. Campo and Campo, yeah, yeah.
You know, second, those are cockers concerns, those are both mine as well. Councilor.
Uh, yeah, same concerns and um, strength. I think that um, that overall though. I wouldn't be opposed to it. I think it would be a good thing to, um, the connectivity. Really is important, especially for those who don't have. Um, reliable, consistent transportation options.
Yeah, oh, the one, one thing I would. It's a no-brainer if the federal government decides that.
What's not clear is if you need to be, to do that beforehand.
I'll tell you a few months advance, at least, if not years. That's true. How is it here?
Six thirty something.
Should we take a, should we wrap this up or do you need?
No, no, I'll, I'll get the league report on priorities and it sounds like we're. Pretty comfortable about our lobbying efforts and our current stance there. All. Again, I don't want to, like, we're not doing anything. I mean, we definitely feel like I'm more active as we get into the session and. And I definitely do what I can in my capacity to advocate for the city as needed and. Um, I'll just commend you again. I think your attendance at the league makes a difference. Um, we've had more council members going to the league and Oregon Mayors Association, not going on the board right now. I I think any of those little things that we do just helps, right? It's just building those relationships, being at the table. And I I can't point to the number of dollars that have come to Flemish for that, but I can. Say without a doubt that it does help, um. When little problems come up, when little things come, when you've been at the table and you've been on these committees and you've been part of the solutions. Uh, it does go a long way as opposed to. Who are you and where have you come from and what city are you and where are they at? And so it does make a big difference. So thank you to you. All that are actively, you know, taking that additional task on. Um, I think it is an additional task that you do in addition to, and part of your efforts to represent citizens of Flemish and residents here. Um, part of that is doing, going up and beyond and serving on these regional efforts and. At the league and going to the conferences and the trainings and. You know, being away from your, your house and your family and whatever for a night or two and and all that. It is a sacrifice, so I. For me to you, thank you for doing that and I I do commend you. I do think it does make a difference and. We're, we're in a really good spot right now going forward and we can, we've seen that return in the form of it and we'll continue to. Um, so, so thank you. So yeah, I don't think I have anything else.
Hold on, we take a twenty-five minute break, come back at seven o'clock.